I thank you. The council has been made aware of the recent passing of a veteran of our town. And I would like to extend condolences on behalf of the council to the family of Mr. George A. Hill. Upon his passing, February 5th of 2023, Mr. Hill served in the United States Air Force during the Vietnam War. If you would please all join me in a moment of silence. I thank you very much. The, I will remind councilors and the public that our meeting is being aired live this evening and recorded for future broadcasts. First item on our agenda is the approval of minutes from the council meeting of February 7th, 2023. I would entertain a motion for approval.
So moved second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? And seeing none, we will need to conduct roll call votes this evening. Consulor McKinnon is participating remotely.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
And Mr. McKinnon?
Yes.
Eight in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you. I do have a proclamation to read this evening. It's upon the event of the retirement of firefighter George W. Hoag. And I will read the proclamation. Fighter fighter EMT George W. Ho will be retiring on March 6th, 2023 from the town of Bridgewater after a successful 32-year career in municipal service. And whereas in 1991 firefighter EMT Hoag joined the Bridgewater Fire Department. And whereas firefighter EMT Hoag has held other positions within the department, including assistant mechanic from 2006 Plymouth County Tech Rescue Team and Bridgewater Fire Department Honor Guard. And whereas firefighter EMT Hoag was named firefighter of the year in 2012 from the Department of Fire Services. And whereas firefighter EMT Hoag has specialized training in CDL license class B, confined space rescue, protective breathing, search and rescue, rope rescue, structural collapse, swift water rescue and trench rescue. And whereas firefighter EMT Hoag has provided valuable services to the residents of the town of Bridgewater through his assistance during their time of need. And he did without hesitation and without concern for his own safety each time the call of duty arose. Whereas upon his retirement firefighter EMT Hoag will be missed by his colleagues and the town of Bridgewater, but can now enjoy his retirement. Resolve that the town of Bridgewater hereby extends their congratulations to firefighter EMT Hoag for his dedication and service to the town of Bridgewater, which will be signed today, this seventh day of, is executed as of the seventh day of February, 2023. I thank you and I extend my personal and sincere congratulations and those on behalf of the council. Thank you so much firefighter Hoag. We have no proclamation, I'm sorry, we have no, we have appointments, I'm sorry, I'm moving ahead of myself. We'll go right to citizen open forum at this point. And I'll ask if any citizens care to address the council, you may do so by stepping forward to the podium and stating your name and street and limiting your remarks to not more than three minutes. Are there any members of the public who are so interested? Yes, please.
I'm here about my water. I'm sure this is not new to you, but I'd be interested if you keep this. It's kind of unsettled right now from travel from my house to here. But I guarantee you that in four hours, you'll look at the bottom of this jar and you will not drink it. I don't care who says it's safe to drink. This is not safe. If I sound angry, I apologize. I'm more frustrated than I am angry. I moved from a community where water was pristine and faceless. And it's very upsetting. A week ago, Sunday, I put in a load of laundry, all whites, because I'm old fashioned and separate my colors from my whites. And everything came out a very dark beige. A set of brand new sheets that have only been used one week. And I've tried everything to get the color out and it doesn't move. On top of that, for four years, I have heard that it's due to the growth of the town and we just can't handle the supply and demand. I've heard that it is environmentally damaging the waters because of the growth, rapid growth of the town. And now we're hearing that it's flushing hydrants. And last week we were hearing it was due to frozen pipes. Well, pipes have not been issue freezing for the last four years. I've been lugging five gallon jugs and buying my water from Simpson Spring because I trust the water. And at my age, lugging in five gallon jugs, this is a real feat. And I've been doing it for four years. It's ridiculous. I pay my water bill. I can't wash my car. I can't water my garden. You know, it just goes on and on. I use gray water to take care of my flowers and vegetables. And still I'm paying a water bill. And today I spent the fortune to have a reverse osmosis system put in my house. That's how serious it is to me. And I just feel like we're only getting excuses. I'm from High Pond Drive. In the High Pond Estates, I did a survey. I filled out the water reports, tell us about your problem form. A week ago, I have not heard a word. I left a phone number like they asked me to do. Not heard one word about it. My neighbor did call on Monday, however, of that same week and they showed up her door 20 minutes after her call, but not offering any solutions or any encouragement. It's really becoming old. And we all want to know, what are you going to do about it? And why are we still giving out building permits to developers? When you can't handle the water supply to people now? I think those are very legitimate questions. I guess that's it.
Thank you, I'm sorry, I may have missed your name, though.
Rosemary Anderson.
Okay.
Yeah, and I just did a survey to my community. Fifteen houses being affected by this are on High Pond Drive. And there were two on alternate streets and three more on another street. It's not every street. It is really no rhyme, no reason. Who's getting it and why? And we just would like to get some answers and see some solutions and I'm going to leave this with you.
I thank you for your comments, thank you. Are there other citizens who care to step forward for citizen public comment? Mr. Beal?
I'm Keith Beal, 10 Field Crest Drive.
I'm Norman Chipman of 75 Ash Ted Road.
Norman, I am here representing the Fourth of July Committee, the mighty band of six that put on the Fourth of July event each year. Lisa Bazzell Curly is our chairman, Jeff Fowler is our treasurer, Nancy Wood and Sarah Cashman are the other two members that that put together the event every year. And usually we visit you around June to announce the upcoming event and the things that will be happening and the times and et cetera. This year we felt like we had to come early because the Fourth of July is in danger, financial danger of not being able to be held this year. Last year we collected about $10,000 less than we did the prior year and our expenses went up by $7,000. Our expenses over the last four years have gone up around $12,000. Everybody knows that the prices in the world today are going up and it's not easy to stand before the town asking for funds because we understand businesses and towns are strapped and they're dealing with with inflation and they're dealing with, you know, everything, the fallout of COVID, et cetera. You know, but we do everything that we can do to make sure that this one day, this one day in our town where we don't think about the traffic, we don't think about the water, you know, we don't think about all the things that are troubling us and we get together as a community to celebrate our nation's birthday. And it is an event and it's an event that not only our community takes advantage of, but we get people from all over. It is, you know, it is just a really, really special day in our town. The town does not provide any kind of financial assistance, although people argue with us when we tell them that. This is all privately funded. So I'm here and we're here, not to look for financial assistance because we know that's not a possibility through the town. But what we are looking for is your leadership, your connections, the businesses that you deal with, the people that you deal with every day. And with our town employees and everybody, we have to get the word out if we want this data happen. We think we have to raise about $50,000 this year because of increased prices. And what we're planning on doing is probably early to middle June, we'll look at where we're at and make a decision because you can't wait till the last minute and then decide that we don't have enough money to do it. So we're going to make a big push. We've brainstormed some new fundraising events that we're going to try. It's not easy when there's only six of us. We do all the events by ourselves. We do all the collections by ourselves. Businesses help us by letting us put buckets out there. A few businesses have allowed us to have fundraisers, Greyhound, Black Hat, the 99 Papaginos has helped us. I mean, we've gotten the help and citizens have been so generous. So it's not a matter of that we're trying to scare people. It's not a matter of that we're trying to threaten people. We just want people to understand that this year it's going to be really challenging. And it'll probably be challenging every year going forward. But we feel and I think anybody who's ever spent the day in Bridgewater for the Fourth of July, whether you're a citizen or not, realize the importance of that day, not only as a nation, not only as a town, but as a community coming together for a parade and an arts festival and a carnival. And then the best set of fireworks, you know, I'll put it up against any town in Massachusetts, you know, and there's not many towns still being able to do Fourth of July fireworks. I think Middleborough does it, we do it, but I don't know of anybody else in the in the newer area except down at the Cape maybe. So people continue to come here to spend their day and take advantage. And, you know, we just want to keep it going. That's our drive. Again, we understand, you know, the financial scope of it. We'll do everything that we can do because we are committed, especially Lisa and Jeff have been on the committee for a long, long time. And they put in a lot of hours. And so we're just here again to make anybody who may be watching aware. We've done it on Facebook. We're letting people know we're not pulling any punches. We're not going to, again, this is not scare tactic. This is just something that we're passionate about. We want to do Roach Brothers allows us to tag out there. I should mention them. Numerous, numerous companies have helped us. But this year we're going to need the help of everybody if we're going to be able to pull this off. I don't know if anybody, you know, if you have any questions or if anybody wants to know exactly what's going on, we're happy to tell. We don't do anything different. We do the same thing every year. We haven't added pizzazz. We haven't added, you know, we just do the same thing every year. We have a parade. We have, we have an arts festival. We have a carnival and then we have fireworks with a little bit of DJ entertainment from Jeff Fowler. You know, so it's not like we've changed a lot of stuff. We don't have to change it. It works. It's a day. It's a day that's important to a lot of us, especially us six. So we just wanted to take a little of your time and we appreciate the time to speak to just let you know that we're going to do everything that we can. And hopefully we're coming back in June, early June and telling you about the events and what's going to happen and how great it's going to be. We'll know then. Anything that you can do to help us, we'd appreciate it.
Can I add to what you said? As Keith said, we have an increase of about $12,000. That sounds like a small number when you put it up against the numbers that you guys deal with. It's a 50% increase from where we were just a few years ago. As he mentioned, there's only six of us. So fundraising can really only get us so far. We do a fundraiser, we make very little money off of it. We do the fundraisers to generate awareness and maybe some people will donate later. We are, we are, we just say 80 to 90% dependent on private donations. From our citizens, we have senior citizens who send us $5 checks and we're very pleased to get it. We have businesses that write us checks for 5,000. But we need more of that in order for us to seriously be able to provide the type of day we've been providing. So again, we're not here asking for money. Keith said that and we mean that. But we need anyone and everyone that is aware of this meeting today, watching it on cable, reading about it in the paper, that we need the donations or we're not going to be able to provide the day to the same level that we have. Maybe we could do something smaller. Maybe we won't be able to do anything at all, but we are doing our best.
I thank you both. Other further citizens for citizen comment? And seeing none. We would move on to appointments. We have several appointments this evening, the first of which we received from the Citizens Advisory Committee, a recommendation for the appointment of Beth Young to the Cultural Council for the period 2023 through 2026. And I would, I would entertain a motion for approval of the appointment of Beth Young.
So moved second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, if we could have a vote, please.
Mr. McKinnon?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
And Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Eight in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you. And similarly, we have an appointee for the tree committee. It has been recommended to us that the appointment of Pat Neary to the tree committee for the period 2023 through 2026. He also approved this evening. I would entertain a motion.
Second.
Motion and a second, thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, and we could have a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
And Mr. McKinnon?
Yes.
Eight in favor, zero opposed.
All right, I thank you. And finally, we have an appointment pending for the tree committee, in this case for the designated James Hayes Bohannon for the period 2023 through 2026. I would entertain a motion for approval?
So moved.
Motion and a second, thank you. Any discussion? Yes, Consulor?
Sorry, what's the tree committee?
The tree committee. It, we formed the tree committee in, I want to say September of last year. And it's an advisory committee to the council and it, it serves a mission to protect trees in the town, to encourage the planting of trees and to basically guide all of the tree, all the departments of the town with respect to maintenance of the trees.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. We have a motion for approval? We are all set, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Mr. McKinnon?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
And Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Eight in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you. We have a number of hearings this evening. We'll commence the first hearing. And I'll open the public hearing now. And the time is 7:20. This is on the matter of proposed ordinance FY23-007, acceptance of local tax option, retail marijuana tax. It has been brought forward by Consulor Wood. And I will ask him if he has any introductory comments to this matter.
Just briefly, as we discussed before, in several places in Mass General Law, if you want to take on a new fear tax, you have to accept that section of law. And given the January 7th vote, popular vote of allowing the medical dispensaries to switch over to retail and the possibility that it's time now to set the tax and to do that, we accept this provision.
I thank you. Are there any members of the general public here with questions concerning this proposed ordinance? I see none. Any member of the public here to speak in favor of this ordinance? Anyone to speak in favor? I see none. Any member of the public here to speak in opposition to the adoption of this ordinance? I see none. Questions from the town councilors? Anyone? I see none. I will close the hearing. I see the time is 7:22. I would entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Second. Motion and a second, any further discussion? I would ask, please, for a roll call vote.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
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 Thank you. Second hearing before us this evening is on the matter of the, I'm sorry, on the matter of the Retail Marijuana Tax Reserve Fund, proposed ordinance FY23-008. Once again, this has been brought forward by Consulor Wood. Consulor, if you have any comment, you could offer at this point?
Sure. Since this is a new tax, similarly the other new taxes, and we don't know exactly how much it's going to bring in in the initial years. I thought it was best to be able to put it into a reserve account instead of pushing it right into the general fund. As you know, in the budget process, our financial director and the town manager go through a process of trying to estimate revenues and build a revenue-based budget so that when our expenses come in, we are matching off that. Adding a reserve fund allows the tax money to be, to be put there by the council and then be subsequently used by the council in ways it sees fit. Now, it could be used for the general, general fund item, operational item could be used for a school item, could be used for a capital item. And subsequent, in subsequent years, if the council decides this fund could be dissolved and it just reverts back into the general fund. But for now, since we don't have a crystal ball and we can't estimate what the taxes are, I thought that like in other areas where we've set up specific funds, we should do that for the taxes as well.
I thank you. I would ask firstly if there are questions from members of the general public here concerning this proposed ordinance? No question from the general public? Is there any member of the public here to speak in favor of this ordinance? Anyone speaking in favor? I see none. Any member of the public here to speak in opposition to this proposed ordinance? And once again, I see none. Are there questions from the town councilors? Yes, Consulor Gallagher?
Thank you, Mr. President. And, you know, my concern with, with this earmarking this money or tying it up, if you will, I think, I think goes, goes kind of against the policy of trying to build a fiscal budget. We have worked, this council and previous councilors have worked with the town manager and his financial team over the last 10 years to build up very solid reserve funds in, in this community. Where we're able to earmark money for capital projects that could not or would not really fit into the regular operating budget as departments put them together. In my view, which is really what the law, when this was established to allow the local communities to establish up to a 3% a tax on the sale of marijuana, was to help out with the operating budget. And I think whatever the money is, when it starts to come in, should be another tool in the local receipts portion of our revenue projections, like meals tax, hotels tax. We should have another line item says marijuana tax when those monies start to come in. Because I do think once, if we don't do that, I do think that it'll be harder for us to move that into the general, but into the general budget instead of making it more like a capital account. And later on in the, in the evening, we do have a request to review those accounts just to make sure that we're, we're using them appropriately. So I think it'd be better for this tax to be part of our local receipts. I may be in the minority, but I think it should be part of our local receipt, which is what all other communities that adopted this have done. And, you know, with all respect to Consulor Wood, I know he's worked very hard on this over the years, but he's also put out some very high numbers as to what we're missing out on revenue. And tonight he says he doesn't know when we've given, we've been given so many different statistics as to that we're losing a half a million dollars a year or we're missing this, we're missing that. And now we don't know. But we do know that this will generate revenue. I agree. And it probably will generate a substantial amount of revenue. And I do think, I think when this revenue does start to come in, it should be part of our revenue stream to allow the financial team to put together a budget based on the requests that departments have put in and have just another tool of our revenue source. That's what I think. That's why we encourage businesses to come to town. It helps with our revenue tool. Is everything that comes to town that generates revenue, we're going to say, well, let's put that aside. Let's not, let's not allow the local, the, the town management to use it for, for revenue, for operating purposes for, for the operating budget. So I'm going to vote against this because I, I don't think setting up a reserve account for this is appropriate.
Thank you, Consulor. Further discussion? Yes, Consulor Perry?
Thank you. I see what Mr. Gallagher is saying. I just think because of the newness of this particular tax, we don't know what that particular number is going to be early on to contribute to the, the general fund. So I think the goal of this particular direction is just to hopefully have this account in place for the first two to three years to get an idea of how much money might be coming in from this tax. And then potentially, you know, budget for it going forward into a general fund situation. So I do think it's, you know, it's appropriate at this point in time to set up this account for those funds so we can plan better going forward and anticipate how many, how much funds might be coming in down the line. But at this point, we don't know. Thank you.
Thank you, Consul. Any further comment? Seeing none, oh, I'm sorry. Consulor Wood?
In principle, I don't disagree with Consul Gallagher. It's like a meals tax. It's like the hotel tax that we put together. And I don't, I don't disagree with that at all. I would hope in this, there's a number of steps and I explained it to another group. There's a number of steps before we'll see a single tax dollar. The town manager has to conclude the host agreement with one or both of the, of the folks. They have to go through the CCC for approval. There's a couple of steps there, so I don't know when revenue would start up. So in this budget cycle, because we're, we're, we're pretty close to the fiscal year, I would hope that the, the budget process probably puts a zero in for line item 17, 18, whatever on the revenue sheet. And that next year it still might be a zero. If it's a zero next year and it generates, say, $200,000, the process, as everybody knows, is that we, we set up the expense budget to mirror the revenue projections. And so if we, if we don't know what the revenue projection should be, it should be a zero on the line item. If we take in $200,000, that becomes free cash at the end of the, at the end of the fiscal, at the end of the fiscal year. And then the free cash has a policy, a cash policy to actually go into capital funding directly as opposed to being used for operations. directly as opposed to being used for operational or special requests otherwise. So you can, you can treat it that way. I think in the early years, we're better off treating it as a zero and being surprised when we see revenue and then seeing it go into free cash and capital. But I think this is an easier mechanism to say, okay, we know exactly how much we have there and we can put it back into a specific allocation for an operational request or a school request or something like that. That's either way works. I just think this is a slightly more conservative way of of treating it.
Thank you, Counsel. Any further discussion? And seeing none, I would ask for a roll call vote, please.
Did we make a motion actually to?
No, there's been no motion.
I'll make a motion to approve. Oh, did you close the hearing?
Oh. Forgive me. The hearing is now closed. I'm closing the hearing. It is seven, seven thirty-one, I believe.
So I'll make a motion to approve.
And if we could, thank you. A motion to approve. Is there a second? Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, then I would ask for a roll call vote, please.
Mr. McKinnon?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
No.
Mr. Lindy?
No.
Mr. Gallagher?
No.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Five to three.
Okay, I thank you. The next hearing, we have a license transaction. This is petition P twenty-two-three dash zero-two-one. Petition for National Grid and Verizon New England Inc. Installation and relocation of of poles located at one seventy-one High Street. I will open the public hearing into seven thirty-two. Is there anyone here to represent the petitioner in this matter? Yes, thank you. If you could please introduce yourself.
Hello, my name is Simon Young. I'm one of the engineers for National Grid.
Thank you very much. I'm not sure if we may have questions from the public concerning this, but hopefully you would be able to help us in that regard if we do.
Yeah. For this particular job, we were just requested on town, the town for High Street is building a bridge for the river, so they have subcontractors. We met on site. And I went through their plans and just went according to their plans and their engineer and Stanford approved to relocate these poles.
That's right. Thank you. And this is at the, at the one seventy-one High Street location?
Yep, it's in that corner.
That's right. And I will ask if there are questions from the general public concerning this matter? I see none. Is there any member of the general public here to speak in favor of this petition? Anyone speaking in favor? I see none. Any member of the public here to speak in opposition to this petition? And once again, I see no member of the public in opposition. Accordingly, I will close the hearing. It is seven thirty-three. I would ask if there are questions from the town councilors, Counselor Perry?
Thank you. I'm just looking at your plan. It seems like most of the new poles are right next to old existing poles. Except for that one in the corner of Wall and High on the left-hand side. Any reason why for the pole there and is that going to be in need of any guide wires and things like that?
Yep. Properties. The new additional one is more for guiding the relocation of the poles. You know, when you relocate the existing poles, it creates the tensions in our cables.
Yep.
So that new additional pole is more for supporting that extension of High Street. You see one seventy-one, one sixty-one.
Yep.
And the new pole is fourteen and fourteen dash thirty. So that pole is more for it to be in line to basically guide and support that section.
Very good. And do any of these poles need any guide wires or anything? Are they going to be freely standing?
I think existing, they have some anchors and guys already.
Okay.
So we'll probably have enough space to keep them to the same. But there won't be, are you expecting the guys that are going from pole to pole or in the ground?
Okay.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Are there further questions? Counselor Wood?
Thank you. Just a question. So you're putting, I understand the new P one, but for the other ones that are next to each other, are they different heights or are they, what's the reason for putting a pole right next to another pole?
There won't be another, but those are going to be removed. So these new poles are going to be higher heights because subcontractor said there's going to be some drill shafts that's going to be used to lift the bridge up. So these poles are going to be additional like five feet tall.
Okay, so they're tall. Thank you. That's why, okay.
Thank you, Counsel. Any further questions? I see none. We have closed the public hearing. I would entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
And Mr. McKinnon?
Yes.
Eight in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you very much. We have a further petition by the same petitioner. This is petition P twenty-two-three dash zero-two-two. Petition for National Grid and Verizon New England Inc. Installation of Poles nine-one-one Conan Street. I note that this is intended to provide service to to the corrections facility. I would note that the time is seven thirty-six and I will open the public hearing. Are there any questions, general questions from members of the public with respect to this petition? I see no questions from the general public. Any member of the general public here to speak in favor of adoption of this petition? I see none. Is there any member of the public here to speak in opposition to this proposal? Any member of the public opposing this? Once again, I see none. Questions from the town council is concerning this? Counselor Perry?
Thank you.
Mr. Young, just obviously new poles being constructed here?
Yep, there's new poles. Currently, there's some existing poles that are basically chopped down and I feel like they have either communication or some other sources that we have no utilities so far. So we're going to install these new poles and this particular lot is for apparently a just a trailer. That's what they're using for for the correction facility. That's all about that one.
All right. Thank you so much.
Any further questions? I see none. Accordingly, I will close the public hearing at seven thirty-eight PM. I would entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. If we could have a roll call vote, please.
Mr. McKinnon?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
And Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Eight in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you. Before us, we have one additional licensed transaction. It is a petition P twenty-two-three dash zero-two-three, change of officers or directors for Cumberland Farms, one thousand one Pleasant Street. And I note that the appropriate documentation has been provided to us. The officers in question are Caroline Tittlebaum, serving as president treasurer and a director. Nicholas Unkovic, serving as secretary director and general counsel. Mark Rudnick, serving as assistant treasurer. And I believe those are the only officer positions. I would ask, first of all, I should open the public hearing. It is now seven thirty-nine and ask if there are any questions from the general public? Any members of the public with questions about this matter? I see none. Any member of the public here to speak in favor of this matter? Once again, I see none. Any member of the public here to speak in opposition to this petition? And there were none. Are there questions from the town councilors? I see that there are none. I will close the hearing. Time is seven forty. I will entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Thank you. Any further discussion? I see none. If we could have a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
And Mr. McKinnon?
Yes.
Eight in favor, zero opposed.
I thank you. We can move on to the town manager's report and I would ask Mr. Dutton if you would kick things off.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a few items this evening, which I can go through relatively quickly. The fire station update. I can tell you that we are commissioning an updated cost estimate to make sure that whatever design, the final design actually fits within that cost estimate. So that is ongoing. We should have that back shortly. We're about to do boring and soil testing on the site to confirm what the preliminary testing showed us and that that should be going on within the next several weeks. And there will be a day-long planning session with the fire department later this month to really plan out the details of 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 the facility so that that will happen later this month. But that's about about it on the fire station at this point. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from the councilors? I see none.
On truck exclusions, I know the counselors, many counselors have been contacted by constituents concerned with truck traffic on a number of different streets. And we have been in communication with Mass DOT. Our engineering, our town engineer has reviewed some of the threshold materials that that he needs to review before we can move forward, but but he has reviewed what he needs to review and and confirm that we may be able to request limited truck traffic on some roads according to the Mass DOT rules. The next step is to commission a traffic count study, which is required by Mass DOT. We have done that. And so I expect that the count information, which again is one of those threshold pieces, but I suspect that the count piece will be done within the next couple of weeks. If we meet the the counts that are required by DOT, then we can move forward and request the DOT approve a truck limitation on on the streets that that qualifies. So that's essentially where that stands, but again, happy to answer questions on that.
Any questions from the council members? I see none.
So closely tied with the truck exclusion is just an update or a notification. And again, I'll repeat this many times in front of the council. And then we'll be repeating it many times to the public. Their High Street will be closed. I should back up. The High Street, High Street will be closed at at the point of the High Street Bridge right at the intersection of Wall and our our highway department access. And that will happen June fifteenth. And we are looking at a reopening around October fifteenth. So about four months of closure in order for the contractor to demolish the existing sort of set of culverts and install an actual bridge over the town river in that location. So June fifteenth closure. And we're in the process of making sure that neighbors know that people that traverse High Street on a regular basis know essentially that the whole town knows. So by June fifteenth, we will have plenty of notification out there, but happy to answer questions.
Thank you. Are there questions for the, yes, Counselor Lindy?
Thank you, Mr. Dutton. We've talked about it the last meeting, possibly a little after June fifteenth because of the end of school. Still going to do that?
So the schools actually are okay with the June fifteenth. I've been in contact with the superintendent and and they are fine dealing with that June fifteenth date. So I suspect, you know, if if for some reason, there's a little bit of a delay there, which they're very well, maybe they'll take it, but otherwise they're prepared.
Thank you. Further, yes, Counselor Wood?
Is it possible to like maybe do road markings or something in advance of that so that people know exactly where it's going to end?
Yes.
Because you know, there's a lot of traffic that goes to the the club that's right there. There's traffic right now because of the water problem that's going down to the highway barn. And so I think it'd be educational if people could see the markings of where the work zone might be so that they get a a sense ahead of time that they can do that. And this, the follow-up question is, is is the June fifteenth day tied to the dam removal or is that happening earlier?
No, it all has, the dam can't be removed until the bridge is removed. So between now and June fifteenth, there'll be a lot of preparation work. And then once essentially that I believe the dam and the bridge are sort of coming out concurrently at that point.
Thank you. Thank you. Any further questions? I see none.
Energy aggregation, I know a lot of counselors have also been getting citizens asking about what the town can do to reduce energy bills. So there is a, I'll call it a program, but there is a method that other towns have used to aggregate essentially aggregate all the energy usage in town and then go out to market to look for a supplier, not a distribution. National Good Grid supplies the distribution. But the supply is is a choice that individuals can make anytime they want, pretty much. Or towns can can do wholesale aggregations, aggregate every national grid user and go out to bid looking for a lower price. So it is a hot, particularly hot issue as energy prices are increasing. And and I have asked the Energy Committee to do some research on energy aggregation. And I should point out that aggregation usually requires that everybody's automatically in unless you affirmatively opt out. So it's a little different than just, you know, picking an option as a resident. You're actually in the pool until you opt out. So there's a, there's a little bit of a hitch there. But I have asked, in any case, I've asked the Energy Committee to take a look at that. And I know Energy Chair, Dr. Carlton Hunt, has put together a presentation, which he will believe show you at your next council meeting and sort of outline what aggregation is, what different scenarios might be and how it might be beneficial to the town. So I just wanted to get that sort of on your radar. Let let the council know that that I know you're getting calls and and questions about it and just what what we'll be looking to do over the next couple of weeks. And then, you know, by then you'll, after next meeting, you'll have some idea of where we might go and where we'll get a sense of where you would like to go in terms of aggregation itself. So so that is, that is coming up your next meeting.
All right, thank you. Other questions for the town manager? I see none. I thank you very much.
Thank you.
We have no discussions scheduled for this evening. Committee reports, are there committees that would like to offer a report? Counselor Gallagher, are you, did the Budget and Finance Committee meet this evening?
No. I mean, yes, we met, we met at six o'clock tonight. Sorry. We voted to recommend all the articles on all the legislation for action tonight.
So we didn't. We abstained.
We abstained. Was one on here, the capital expenditure policy. We can get to those when we, when we get to them, but.
Okay. All right, thank you.
I don't want to report on it twice.
We'd like to hear it twice.
You want to hear it twice? All right.
All right, moving on to legislation for action. Order FY twenty-three dash zero-four-four, acceptance of funds, council on aging donation. Town of Bridgewater has received a gift from Edward and Donna Haney for twenty-five hundred dollars, for which we're very grateful. And the council needs to consider acceptance of that offer. I would ask if there, if I would entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and saying, any discussion?
Well, the Finance Committee voted, Budget and Finance Committee voted this evening to recommend this three to zero.
Thank you.
New coffee brewing station.
Exactly right, which we could use right now. Thank you. I appreciate that.
And Mr. President.
Motion in a second. Could I have a, oh, I'm sorry, further question?
No, I just, I wanted to add that the Finance Committee also approved this unanimously.
Thank you. And if we could have a roll call vote?
Sure. Mr. McKinnon?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
And Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Eight in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you. Order FY 23 dash zero four five, ratification of renewal cable television license agreement, Comcast Cable Communication Management and the Town of Bridgewater. I'll ask if Mr. Dutton has any introductory comment to this?
Nope, I'll only repeat what I said at first reading. We've negotiated what I think is a very good contract for 10 years. It calls for the maximum 5% franchise fee to the town and and that fee allows Bridgewater Television, BTV, to continue to operate and do the good work that they do. It also secures capital contributions totaling $230,000 and increase or the addition of high definition to the local access channel. And importantly for us, the maintenance of the fiber connection from the Academy Building to the BTV Studios and then from BTV onto the Comcast hub. And there are a number of other helpful things, I think, for Bridgewater residents. But I, as I did at first reading, I will point out and remind people that we don't have any control over the rates that Comcast charges for their, for their cable, cable television. And and the other thing I'll point out is that cable television, if you get Comcast and you get phone cable and internet service, the only, the only thing that the town benefits from is your cable service, not your internet connection, not your phone service. So for those who are are cutting the cord as I have, but for those cutting the cord, you're not benefiting your local town or your local cable access, cable access channels. So but with that, oh, one important thing, we did also negotiate a side letter agreement that calls for a small senior discount, which folks can avail themselves of if they so choose. It's, it is a discount. It's not a lot, but it is the maximum that Comcast offers in in Massachusetts. So.
I thank you. I would entertain a motion for
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion?
Just dismissed it, President, the Budget and Finance Committee with a little discussion, voted three to zero to recommend.
I thank you very much. And I note that the Finance Committee, at their meeting on the February 16th, did vote approval. If we could have a roll call vote, please.
Sure. Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
And Mr. McKinnon?
Yes.
Eight in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you. The next item is order FY 23 dash zero four six, acceptance of a gift. The Natural Resources Trust of Bridgewater. This is in the amount of $25,000. The town has received this gift, which we asked that the council consider approval of this evening. This would go toward the funding of phase two of the old State Farm Trail Project that we've discussed recently. I note that the Finance Committee had previously voted in favor of this proposal at their meeting on the 16th of February and the Budget and Finance Committee just.
We voted three to zero to recommend.
Voted three to zero. Thank you so much, Councilor. I would entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion? I see none. I would ask, please, for a roll call vote.
Mr. McKinnon?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
And Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Eight in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you. Order FY 23 dash zero four seven, 2023 election debt exclusion ballot question. And I would ask for a comment from the town manager, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Last March, I believe it was, you will recall that the Bristol Plymouth Technical School called for a general election among the residents of their, I believe, eight towns in the district and and asked for whether or not the Bristol Plymouth should build a new technical school. That that vote did pass and so that authorized the district to proceed. Now, the second step is for each town is to decide how to pay for that school and or the piece that is attributed to the piece of that school. It's attributed attributed to each of the towns. And this is is Bridgewater's choice to make to debt exclude the payments that we will have to make on the new school itself. So we would like to place this on the April ballot and this is your opportunity to place this question on the April ballot.
I thank you. I would entertain a motion for approval.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and say any discussion? Yes, Councilor Wood.
Thank you. When this goes on the ballot, I'm going to be strongly supporting it. I I think it's important that kids have an opportunity to attend a trade school. At the BR District does a great job with education, but they really have a lot of those, what I used to call arts, industrial arts and trade absent from their curriculum. And BP is one of the few places that offers that sort of depth. We all sat through presentations across a couple of years of how they've, they've really filled out with population and limited space. And there's clearly a need. Rainham recently did not vote for their debt exclusion on this. And so what that means to Rainham is that they're going to have to find their funding and take it out of operational. So when they pull it out of operational for most, most towns and cities, they're pulling it off the off the public sector side, off the town side, not off the assessed school side for BR, for example. And so that's going to have a greater impact on their fire and police and and other services like that. And I don't think that Bridgewater needs to go through that. If you look at the numbers that are associated with this and and we talked about it in the Finance Committee, it it's going to be about $33 a year per household on average. That's not much to support a branded school across six, seven or eight, eight communities. And so I think that, given the depth of experience and the need for the school, that hopefully the town strongly supports it. Thanks.
Thank you. Any further questions or comments?
Yes, the Budget and Finance Committee voted three to zero to move this forward to the, to a ballot, recommend.
Thank you, Councilor. And the Finance Committee had also approved this at their meeting. I thank you. I would entertain a motion for approval.
It's already.
I did.
Suzie and Bill.
If we could have a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
And Mr. McKinnon?
Yes.
Eight in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you.
Mr. President, on the next item, which is our capital expenditure policy, I make a motion to postpone this until March 21st.
Second that.
Motion and a second. Any discussion?
I'll just explain. We're waiting on feedback from legal and FinCom had met and they're waiting on feedback from legal. So just to make sure this comports with all the the needs and whatnot of the school department and our relationship with them. And I I won't be here for the the night of the seventh. So we'll talk about it again on the 21st if we pass this postponement.
All right. So we have a motion to advance this to our meeting on March 21st.
Right.
If we could have a roll call vote?
Mr. McKinnon?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
And Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Eight in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you. And new business, we have order FY 23 dash zero four eight, acceptance of a Land and Water Conservation Fund grant with respect to the Styles and Hart Parkland Project. This is a grant up to $448,000 plus. And I would entertain a motion for approval.
Make a motion to move it to Budget and Finance and FinCom.
Second that.
Motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yeah, I'll just add, because I may be absent the night that comes back. Styles and Hart is is was a core of my District Six representative and I've been working with the town manager and and the family of the Styles Hart family over multiple years. This grant creates a huge opportunity to really open up that parkland and make other projects accessible. A lot of people don't know exists. There's some trails that are maintained sporadically inside the park. There's a couple of ponds that are there. It is walkable for a couple neighborhoods, but not most. I mean, to get to the park, it's not easily accessible. And so some of the, some of the features of what we can do with this grant money are amazing and really open up the open space for that. And so this has been almost a ten-year effort to get to this point. I'm very happy to see it. Thanks.
Thank you very much, Councilor. And I would ask for a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
And Mr. McKinnon?
Yes.
Eight in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you. And Councilor, I appreciate and congratulate your efforts with respect to this. I know it has gone on for quite some time and you worked diligently at that. Thank you. The next matter before us is resolution FY 23 dash zero zero five, Funds Review Resolution. And I will defer for comment to Councilor Gallagher.
Thank you, Mr. President. I bring this forward tonight to ask that you refer this to the Budget and Finance and Finance Committees. As you know, we, we do have a lot of capital funds, stabilization funds in the town that have been created in the past 10 years. And then we added another one tonight. But I think it's time that we should take a look at them and bring a report back to the council, particularly for the newer counselors that might not be aware of all the different ones that we do have. And take a look at the balances, take a look at the language that was created when these were set up to make sure that it's using, it's being used for its intended purposes and take a look at the balances in there. And if needed be, if need be, the Budget and Finance or Finance Committee could make any recommendations for changes. But it's just to kind of take a look at, you know, where where are we at? Why did we create this? Could a couple be combined and think, just take a look at that. So I ask that you refer this to Budget and Finance and Finance Committees for that purpose and we'll report back to the council, say in a couple, within a couple of months.
Thank you, Councilor. I would entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I'll just, yes, Councilor. I'll just add, I I think this is great. It it does a couple of different things. It creates an initiative for the, for FinCom to take and study and report on, you know, processes that's already in place. Some of you may remember a few years ago, I brought the capital policy back as a new item to see if anyone wants to make changes. And at that point, we didn't, but maybe we do at this point. So to gain an understanding of what the, what the reserves are there for, what their balances are there for, even the mechanisms about how how someone makes a request to use some of the reserves and to tie that back into the free cash policy that funds those reserves would be an excellent opportunity for educational process. And I hope that during that process, maybe there's recordings or something else that's added for people to look at in the future for, you know, when they get on FinCom and want to learn about the process. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilor. Any further discussion? Seeing none. If I could have a roll call vote, please.
Mr. McKinnon?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
And Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Eight in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you. Before us is order FY 23 dash zero four nine, adoption of town council social media policy. And it's been brought forward by Councilor George. I would ask him if he has an introductory comment.
Thank you, Mr. President. So I put together a proposal for a policy. I know there were concerns in regards to some of the legal ramifications, obviously. This will be reviewed by the town council attorney, but if you go through it, for the most part, it's around guidance, things of that nature. It does specifically kind of outline the use of personal accounts versus a dedicated town counselor account versus a a candidate account. It also has in here about being cognizant of not violating open meeting laws. Doesn't go into detail. You'd have to refer to the OML, which is very expansive. But at least in the policy, it does request councilors to understand what that is and obviously not to violate it through social media. And then it just talks about some general things in regards to inappropriate comments, things of that nature. So this is just a first blush of something that hopefully we can put in in our administrative code for current councils as well as future ones as well.
I thank you, Councilor. I would entertain a motion for referral to the book, to the Rules and Procedures Committee.
So moved.
Motion?
Second.
And a second. Thank you. Discussion?
President Chase, you pointed out to me in an email and to other counselors that there's a seminar coming up for the MMA on the 7th of March for this. I would kind of hope we would attend that seminar before we have it in that committee so we can get some feedback from that.
I I personally would agree with that. And I think that I would encourage any counselors who haven't yet really considered it, that your participation in that, that particular webinar might be very helpful for for us all to gain a better understanding of the issue. It's, it's coming up very soon. I think it's on March 7th. Yeah. And so it's not, in my opinion, a, you know, it wouldn't substantially delay consideration of this, but it would probably be extremely helpful. So I, I agree with your comment. I thank you for bringing that up. Any further discussion?
So if it gets referred, my question is, if it gets referred to that committee, can we have that meeting after the 7th?
That is, that's my preference. And yes, I would recommend that we.
Yeah, there's no timeline on this.
Okay.
Well, let's say reasonable time, but not looking forward for the next meeting.
Right. Okay. That's great. Yes, Councilor.
Just from my own learning and understanding, is there a reason why it would go to Rules and Procedures instead of a discussion?
The, no, Rules and Procedures would be the appropriate committee because it's, it's actually contemplating an addition to our administrative code. And part of the function of the Rules and Procedures Committee is to consider the impact of potentially conflicting provisions, you know, within that code so that, and with other law. So we look at it from the standpoint of all that we can see, you know, with state law and our own town code to make sure that a new proposal that is being introduced is going to be consistent and is not at odds with existing law. That's largely the nature and function of that regard. Further discussion? And I would ask, please, for a roll call vote?
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
And Mr. McKinnon?
Yes.
Eight in favor, zero opposed.
I thank you. And we can move on to citizen comments. Are there any citizens present who would like to address the council? In which case, I invite you to step forward to the podium and introduce yourself.
Hi, Carlton Hunt, Austin Street, Vice Chair of the Community Preservation Committee. I want to thank you for accepting the grant. I will remind you that the CPA recommended and you voted $1.3 million for the trails in the park and upgrading. The good news is all of that grant money comes back to the CPA. That's one of the requirements. That we, it's a reimbursable grant. So the money that we, you voted pays for the costs and the grant. There's a whole process and the contracts in process of being signed. Once that's done, those costs can be reimbursed to the town. Those reimbursements come back to the account that we took the $1.3 million from. The good news for that is we have some other things happening that we're going to need that open space money to help support. So this is good news from, from all perspective, but I wanted to remind counselors that it's not just a grant on top of the CPA 1.3. It's a grant that will reimburse the CPA for costs going forward after the signing. The other thing I just wanted to quickly point out that I'll leave it at that. And the energy thing, I'll have something for you next meeting. I will say right now, it's pretty detailed because I'm a scientist, so. Look forward to seeing you.
Thank you. Other citizens for citizen comment?
Mr. Buell? Keith Buell, 10 Field Crest Drive. As the founder and administrator of Bridgewater Residence Facebook page with over 20,000 people, I hear a lot about what hot buttons are going on in town. And I stand before you asking for two things possibly, and that would be, I've seen multiple people's water in their tub, in their toilets. They send me pictures. We as an administration choose not to post all of them because there's not going to be anything that can be solved on our Facebook page, but they're out there. And if there's any way that the town could, or the town manager could update on their Facebook page exactly a little bit of the process of where we stand with the water situation with the new, the new whatever they call it, the new.
Treatment.
The plan, where we're at on the Facebook page so that, because you guys can put things on your webs, on our website, our town website, but it's not the easiest thing to navigate. Some people, the best places on, unfortunately, Facebook. So if there could be any kind of update of where we're at and where we're going with that on your Facebook page, that we could then just forward to my Facebook page very simply. I think communication is the key. I think people just get frustrated when they don't know what's going on. I sent out, after your last meeting, I sent out a post regarding the freeze that happened and what had caused some of the discoloration. You know, and a lot of people, you know, we're glad to hear that explanation. Unfortunately, a lot of people don't watch this meeting either. So communication is the key. And I'd be happy to pass on from any, anything that you feel is important from your Facebook page to our Facebook page to try to get communication out there. The debt exclusion is the other big hot topic item. People still, many people still don't understand the difference between an override and a debt exclusion. I tried to explain that last week also. I think it's important to, to offer education, whether people take advantage of it, at least as leaders, you can say you offered it. So if there's any time that someone could have a gathering to explain the debt exclusion that we're coming up in April and the impact of it, along with any of the other debt exclusions that might be on the horizon. Again, I think transparency and communication are really, really the key. And while I know that many times we've had meetings in this town where two or three people showed up and, and that's okay. But at least as leaders, you can say you offered the time for that. Dennis, I know meets at Bridgewater Bagel every once in a while and allows people to come and talk to him. And I've heard feedback and, and, you know, people want to get educated. But again, you can't force people to get educated, but if you offer it and they choose not to take advantage of that. I was at that town meeting back in the old days where they moved a couple million dollars from a balance sheet account into the schools without anybody knowing that that money was going to have to come out to the, from the fire and the police department's budgets that year. And I'm just, don't want us to be where Rainham's at, where people think, no, I'm not going to vote for another, anything that increased my taxes without understanding the implications of if that vote happened to go that way, what we as a town would have to do. So again, it's just, I appreciate your service. I've said it many, many times. Mr. Wood has announced that he will not be rerunning. And Mr. Wood and I don't agree on a lot of things, but the one thing we do is we listen to each other. And secondly, I appreciate his service and I appreciate everyone's here service. And you don't hear that enough. You hear things on Facebook when you're doing things that people don't like. But just understand there are many, many people who appreciate what you do and how you go about doing it. Thanks.
Thank you. And we could move to council comments. I'd like to begin this evening, if I could please, with Consulor McKinnon.
No comments from me tonight, President.
Oh, thank you. Consulor George?
Thank you, Mr. President. No comments from me tonight as well.
Thank you. Consulor Perry?
Thank you. I'll make a few. Why not? First of all, I definitely want to thank firefighter EMT George Hoag for his years of service and wish him much luck and enjoyment in his years of retirement going forward. Thank him again for all his years of service. Also, thank you to Beth Young, Pat Neary, and James Hays Mahan for stepping up to their appointments on these cultural council entry committees. It's again, always important to get more people involved in volunteering for these subcommittees that are vital for our town to function. So thank you again to those people. I also just wanted to comment too on, on the Fourth of July Committee. I was present of that going on over 20 years ago now. And the committee has been around for, you know, 25 to 30 years now. So it's a, it's a, it's a wonderful event that's put on every year. And obviously the cost of it is escalating year by year. I can recall our budget back in the day in the turn of the millennium when I was president was about 10 to 15,000. So I'm sure it's more than tripled from that at this point in time. So, and obviously, you know, I even, my committee back in the day, I think was a little better, bigger than the current committee. So I want to laud the, the current people on that committee for their efforts and their work. And just reach out to those, you know, out there to, you know, think about it early enough to please think about making some serious contributions to, to this committee so the event can take place this year. I know back in the day I ended up stepping down and no one stepped up to take over for me. And there was a year that we did not have the Fourth of July and everyone was upset when there was not an event that particular year. So it stimulated more people to come forward and to volunteer and to donate. So I don't want to see that happening again. So I hope you get the volunteerism and the funds needed to have this year's event go forward. So that's all I.
Thank you, Consulor. Consulor Robinson?
Echo everything that Dr. Perry just said, other than the fact that I was not involved with that Fourth of July Committee years ago. But serious, huge thank you to those who've served in this town, those who've retired and those unfortunately who we've lost as well. And big thank you to all the volunteers who are stepping up. And thank you so much, Mr. Buell, for being here today. I echo your sentiment about, I think communication is really key. Being able to help educate our residents, business owners, young people, et cetera, about what is going on is so important. And again, it can be fleeting, but at least we got to keep trying. I do, you know, I've only been in this seat for a very, very short time and water is definitely the hot topic that I hear constantly. And knowing that this is absolutely being addressed, but the masses are not seeing that or hearing enough about that is certainly an opportunity for us. And yes, I will be happy to do my part in, in sharing about making sure that the Fourth of July can happen again. Because it definitely has been very, very special for so many people for so long. So thank you.
Thank you, Consulor. Consulor Lindy?
Two things. I'm not going to repeat what everybody else said, but I agree with all of that. I do want to make sure we do educate the residents about the water issue because it is the thing I'm getting the most comments about. I haven't been affected by it yet, but you never know. And you don't want to see that jar that's sitting over there for sure. Secondly, if everyone in this town were to give any place between one and five and $10, I think it would solve the problem for the Fourth of July Committee. I know you have some wonderful corporate donors, but if everybody just drops some money, like you were talking about someone that wrote your $5 check, I think that would go a long way to preserving a wonderful tradition. And thank you for all the hard work that you do.
Thank you. Consulor Gallagher?
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to thank Mrs. Anderson that came in to show us her unacceptable water in the town. But I, we did have a, a meeting before the council meeting on the Budget and Finance Committee meeting. And we, I asked, you know, we asked the town manager a little bit about, he explained to us that things are moving in a very, very positive direction. So maybe next meeting, he can give an update on that. But I, I certainly empathize with the people that are posting these things. But I do think there's a light at the end of the tunnel as we have been told. So hopefully the worst is past us and we can get an update at the next meeting or as suggested, some sort of public service announcement be put on our website about that. But I do think things are starting to clear up, if you will, with the new thing going online. And I want to thank the Fourth of July Committee to come in to give us an update and remind us that it is that time of year to help step up and donate as much as you can to help with their efforts. My check is in the mail. Check your P O box. And I hope everybody will do their part and attend some of the fundraisers. And I still think I have that T-shirt, Kevin, when you were president. And I know it fits. It does fit. So I have plenty of T-shirts over these past several years. So it's, it's just a great day in this community when we have this Fourth of July. And I'm sure two months from now, when you come back, we'll, we'll be in a much better spot. But, you know, the word to get, get the word out, attend the fundraisers, make a donation if you can. And everyone should do their part. And yes, this Saturday, I will be having my coffee with the counselor at the Bridgewater Bagel. So we, anybody that wants to come down, 8:30 to 11 o'clock Saturday and, and, and join me for a free cup of coffee and conversation about water, Fourth of July, whatever you want to talk about. I will be there. Thank you.
Thank you. And Consulor Wood?
All right. Just a couple of things tonight. First of all, speaking of BR, BR is hosting a robotics competition the week of March 3rd through 5th. Fourth and 5th is the actual competition. And BR, of course, will have a team there as, as I think there's 32 other teams. Fastest two and a half minutes in sports, man. It's, it's just, it's, it's incredible what goes on there. And so when we talk about BP and, and trade, the robotics team pulls it all together in, in terms of STEM and building and, and everything else you can imagine. So please show up for that. As, as most of you, probably all of you have heard, I'm not seeking reelection in April. In July of 2010, I was at my high school reunion, standing in the Welcome Center at the Capitol, trying to decide if I was going to run for that first council. And my wife and I, we'd just gone through that override that, that had happened. And my wife and I had become pretty much experts at the, at the budget process and understanding the two and a half process and looking at all the numbers of the town. And standing among, I forgot exactly what the exhibit was, but it was obviously forefathers or something. I decided then to run for the first council. And in the, in the time in between then and now, we had a lot of groundwork to cover to build up the council as an organization. My first project was the traffic light at High and Broad. None existed. It was, it was near miss after near miss after near miss until there was an accident. And with the help of many others in the community, we got to stay to authorize the, the funding of that. And we now have a traffic light, which makes it much safer. I worked with Lincoln Andrews and his whole family. And we, the town, we collectively bought the five acres that had joined Route 18. And now we're talking about expanding into parking lots, small parking lot and accessibility to make that, that 75 acres or so really open to the community, which is what our open space policy is all about. The budget process was in shambles. We started off the first year with a negative $750,000 in free cash. Yes, it is possible to have negative free cash. This year through the budget resolution of 10 years or so, we've built it up to the point where we have a capital, capital policy for free cash. We have free cash. We've seen a lot of growth. I am a little bit disappointed. We haven't been able to change the ratio of retail versus commercial out of that 87% residential, 13% retail. But we're working on, in the first year, we had no admin code. I convinced a couple of friends like Carlton and others to join an ad hoc committee with me to review the bylaws and start going through the process. And then we took on a more formal approach. And finally, after it seemed like a long time and many, many revisions, we have, now have an admin code that we can, is not set in stone. We can revise and changes going forward. The zoning code and revision of that was another huge effort that a lot of people worked on. Again, it was piecemeal over the years. We've been talking about doing one comprehensive zoning code. We have done place now. We're going to continue to make changes, obviously, but now we've got that done too. I've been here when we've brought in several new revenue sources. I don't recall if we introduced the meals tax, but I definitely was the sponsor of the hotel tax. Obviously the sponsors tonight of the marijuana tax. And although I don't, we have to appreciate it at a local level. There's only so much revenue and we need to find good sources for that. I will say I posted earlier because I missed last, last meeting in person and I couldn't make it official that I was retiring in April. I've talked to a lot of people about, about pulling papers. Suzie's running for the three-year-at-large. There's a second spot, which would be this spot here. There's 18,000 registered voters in Bridgewater. And that's the only qualification that you need to be to sit on the council. Of course, election helps getting elected, but, but there's 18,000 qualified people that can sit here and join it. I think, you know, there's, there's a lot of challenges ahead, but we've tackled the tough stuff for making the town council stand up and work as a function. When we get to the new budget process, I'm hoping someone else raises the budget resolution and that continues and, and the process continues. But I would prefer that someone announces soon that they're interested and that we can generate some interest. I don't care what their, you know, national politics are or what they are. I want them just to care about Bridgewater and to be open to learning about the processes of the admin code and the budget process and that sort of thing. And there's some dates that are quite critical here. And the reason I announced on Facebook a couple of weeks ago is that because there's only a couple more weekends before you have to turn in your papers to get on the ballot. And so the person that wants to run for council needs to pull the papers by the end of the day on March 2nd. That's a Thursday. And they need to get them back to the clerk's office, which is really to the board registers on March 6th by the end of the day. There is this another date that seems confusing because it's out on March 20th, I think, which is the town clerk. But that's not the day to return papers. So there's only really two weekends here for someone to go out and get their, get their 50 signatures and get the paperwork back. And that's the fair process in, in elections is that you get to see, and I know I'm not saying anything about, you know, the ratings, but there's, the fair process is that, you know, you get to see who's on the ballot. You get to hear on BTV what their position or you get to talk to them directly and try to understand who they are and what they're all about. And in many cases, but not in Bridgewater, there's two people that are running against each other. And so you get to kind of pick which, which person you want. I hope that at least one person pulls papers and you, there's limited time. So get the word out there. I will be retiring in April, doing other stuff, I suppose, but I don't have any plans right now. And, you know, the other important thing is robotics, third through fifth over at BR. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Consulor. I would like to just echo a couple of comments that we've heard previously from the counselors this evening. First of all, I do want to again extend my congratulations to firefighter Hoag. Just in, and having read the proclamation this evening, I became at least superficially acquainted with his qualifications. And they are indeed very impressive, as is his dedication to the town and to the citizens of Bridgewater. So congratulations to him on the occasion of his impending retirement. I do think that Mr. Buell had brought forth a, a tremendous reminder to us tonight. The fact is that we know how important the Fourth of July event is in Bridgewater. And it is very true that not every town has a very festive, a very well-attended Fourth of July event, unfortunately. But we have had the benefit because of our Fourth of July Committee in, in recent years to produce a very well-attended, very enjoyable. Committee in, in recent years to produce a very well-attended, very enjoyable event. And it's not surprising to learn that there's additional pressure on the organization this year, given that we're all facing some tougher decisions with respect to disposable cash, shall I say. So I certainly would urge that for all of us who can think about doing so, to please consider making a donation and making it earlier than maybe we customarily would. As Mr. Buell indicated, that it's something that the committee is hopeful to have an answer in hand, you know, sometime next month, sometime in March, because there's so much planning that's involved that has to be worked on. So I, I would encourage everyone to please seriously consider the opportunity to make a donation to the town Fourth of July Committee. And as everyone here knows full well, and I think many of the people viewing know, know this as well, that the town itself does not contribute funds toward this event. It's all privately organized, privately funded, and for us to continue to appreciate this annual event, it's important for us to do what we can to step up and support it. So those are my, my comments. I, I'm also very excited about the appointees who the council approved this evening for the various boards and committees that they have been referred to us for. And I think that I wish them all much success. It's, I think, very encouraging to see that kind of turnout when we know that historically it's been difficult to engage citizens for purposes of participation in boards and committees. But certainly tonight was an exception to that past experience, and I think that it's very encouraging to see them come forward. So with that, we are scheduled to conduct a, an executive session this evening, and I will read to you the required language. I will entertain a motion to move into executive session under Mass General Laws, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, Subsection 3, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation where discussing the matter in open meeting will have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body and to adjourn from executive session. So moved. Motion and a second. Thank you. Any discussion? I see none. If we could have a roll call vote, please.
Mr. McKinnon?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
And Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Eight in favor, zero opposed.
I thank you. We stand adjourned.